We'll go ahead and gabble the meeting to order.
I wish you the best of the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board has a special question for qualified members of the president. Next up is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion and second to the committee agenda, any discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Next up would be our consent agenda.
You approve all the consent agenda?
We have a motion and a second of the consent agenda. Any discussion on that, I'll go ahead and offer that. Let's vote on that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm, I think I have to.
I think you are covered.
Oh, am I? I'm an aye on that.
You're an aye on that, yes. You'll notice that later on. So let's move on to the special programs, which is a wonderful part of this. It is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Coming up soon, May 2nd through 6th is Teacher Appreciation Week. If I could ask the board president's pleasure, I'd like to read out a proclamation from our governor that really proclaims May 2nd through 6th, 2022 as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Whereas a strong, effective system of free public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas the United States has made considerable progress in the social, technological, and scientific fields to improve our system of free and universal public education, and whereas much of this progress can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers entrusted with the educational development of our children, and whereas teachers provide opportunities for students to connect with the world around them, develop basic skills for success in life and work, experience the realization of high expectations and the fulfillment of steps toward useful goals. And whereas teachers should be accorded high public esteem, reflecting the value placed in their skills and abilities and the importance of public education, and whereas it is appropriate that teachers be recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating their students. Now therefore, I, J M, the governor of the state of Washington, appear back for plan again, May 2nd through 6th as Teacher Appreciation Week. We're a little ahead of that, but this is our last regular board meeting before that opportunity to really commemorate and thank our teachers for their incredible work, their tireless efforts, especially within these last two years with COVID, what we've expected from them with online teaching, hybrid teaching, face-to-face, and all the safety protocol measures to continue to support our students, to work collaboratively together to achieve high outcomes for all kids and hopefully achieve the board's vision of developing Washington's most thought after graduates. I take this opportunity to thank our teachers publicly, and we will obviously have some private thanks for them over the coming weeks as we celebrate them over the coming first week of May. So thank you for that opportunity to celebrate our teachers.
Certainly, and thank you to the teachers that are in the audience. We need the entire teachers on our online audience. The next one is actually now, it's not in the future. This is the Art Regir Outstanding Volunteer Awards.
All right, well, this, tonight, what a great opportunity it is to recognize some incredible partners we have in the school district. As I've done in the last six or so years, we're going to talk a little bit about Grandpa Art Regir and where this work came from, the history behind this, and then recognize again just three incredible people and some of their, I would say, partners in crime for volunteerism that will help recognize and celebrate tonight. So tonight, we take the honor, tonight, we take the time to honor our volunteers in celebration of Volunteer Appreciation Month. Each April, the district presents Art Regir Outstanding Volunteer Awards to volunteers who have demonstrated exceptional service or contributions to the children of Wawa' Public Schools. This prestigious award was instituted over 30 years ago as a memorial to Grandpa Art Regir. Regir was a retiree who devoted years of service to elementary schools in Wawa' and epitomized the spirit of volunteerism and education. His tireless dedication and concern for the students he served are the inspiration for this award. Tonight, I am proud to add three outstanding volunteers to our prestigious list of dedicated community members who have helped shape the minds and hearts of generations of Wawa' alumni. Our first recipient and our last recipient can come up here and maybe if our board president, Viner, and board vice president got a trip, would join up front. Our first recipient tonight is Anne Ray. Anne, come on up. And no, Anne, Mark's been trying with her. I'll give you the chance to make sure we can introduce those folks here with you tonight. So Anne Ray, class of 1959, has spent countless hours and years helping to preserve the history of Wawa' schools through her work with the Wawa' High School Alumni Association. Classroom unit organizers have counted on Anne's support for decades. Anne would often offer help of startup postage money for the class weekend and reunion planning. Anne has been the keeper of school memorabilia, including Waha' yearbooks, files of each graduating class with information found in newspaper articles. She just presented another one. Mark, hold it up, just hold it up. Take a look at this, it'll work to see that. First, Anne Ray is walking by to show off this.
That's the second one. Suzie's already put the first one on. This sucker is so.
All of this work has really helped future classes have successful and memorable reunions. And really, for us to commemorate the glorious history as known of Wawa' Public Schools. For years, she kept items in the district office to help people plan reunions and continues to help support those as well. Anne says her good friend Susan Timmons Queen, class of 1955, also played a key role in the establishment of the alumni association. Most recently, during the preparation for the bond for their renovation projects at Wawa' High School, Anne spent countless hours in the upper storage areas upstairs. If you had not been in there, that was packed full with.
No American in here.
And so really helping organize and really review these materials for relocation in the district office archives for future use. Anne wanted to make sure that Mark Mavis and students in the J R O T C program were also recognized for volunteering to help with this work. Can I come on up here and let's introduce yourselves? You may be incredible students, but introduce yourselves to our audience here tonight.
Commander.
Up here.
Well, I am back, well, I am back.
This is Mark, your commander. And when we started this, two years ago, May, nobody was at the school because of the virus. No staff, no teachers, nobody. And that man has never told me no, but every time I needed a box brought up or down to my car, and it's a long hike up to the attic up there. If any of you have never been there, it's high up there. And these are part of the boys that helped. And I, you know, I said, I don't recognize you without a box in front of you. And they were there at the school because they were doing, both all cadets were there doing rifle practice. So they've helped me a lot. And by May, I will promise to have your scrapbook done for your annual review. 1919 on.
I'm the cadet battalion commander of Actual Booster.
I'm cadet first lieutenant Kayden Kerr, commander of Alpha Company.
I'm cadet sergeant Chance Barnes, and I'm just an officer company as well.
I'm cadet first lieutenant Benjamin Nelson, I'm commander of Delta.
Anne, go ahead.
This is just a very small fraction of the cadets that helped. We just wanted a representative group up here, not all 50 of them.
And the girls helped too.
Anne, is there anyone else who want to recognize you, thanks tonight?
Ah, yes, there's a couple of other people that I, without, first of all, I've never been to school board meeting. I've seen your names and I know who you are. And, you know, I've only seen Wade and Suzie for the last two and a half years.
And she's good at the work, by the way, she's.
I invited Carolyn here, who was head of the print shop at Waha'. The first year she wasn't there, so I paid the light bill at Staples for my while because I live in Eastgate. And Barbara Brown is head of the vault. And Barbara was a godsend to help me. I ended up, I was only going to do Waha' alumni things, and that only came to 50 boxes. Well, I ended up 174 I passed up for the school district. There was no staff there, and I wanted to make sure, like the old office machines and trophies wouldn't get broken. So we passed, I told the movers, no, wait, come back in an hour. But anyways, Carolyn and Barbara were a big help to me and their staff. And I've had the pleasure of meeting every principal in the city of Wawa' and college places. Two and a half years, I probably made two to three trips to each school because our alumni turned in so much history. It isn't Waha' history, that's to stay with your schools. And I've had the pleasure, and you folks hire them, and you've done a great job because I've always asked for the principal because I don't want to go to a file and nobody will ever find it, and I need the principal. Anyway, it's been enlightening, gave me something to do during the pandemic.
Anne, on behalf of.
All you do, yeah.
Anne, on behalf of our first school district, that's really countless past graduates, but also the future, students that come into our system and school, teachers and administrators new to our system can really again reflect on this. Really was a glorious 160-plus year history of Wawa' Public Schools. We've got a pile of pictures on the back wall, the trophy case. To continue to bring trinkets to us, it's really great to see flash range from 100 years ago and what those things look like. So please take the time, maybe not tonight, but over the course of the next weeks and months, really revel in our online yearbook and really look back and reflect on that work. And we have you and your colleagues to thank you for that. So without further ado, let's recognize Anne for her incredible work.
The only thing I wanted to add, Wade, real quick. I have been conning, we're doubled up on reunions this year because of the pandemic. So the high school's really been busy. And we used to have our own phone number, and this is a subtle hint to the board member. I'm working with the kids from the 80s and on because Susan, I turned 80 in August. Susan's.
Eighty-five now.
Eighty-five now. It's time the young ones took over you. And alumni is needed. It takes a burden off your staff at the high school. If you, we had, we used to get all the calls for the reunions. And the day before yesterday, the kids from 2012 came, I had a box of decorations. They're so broke, they can't afford decorations. But it's really important that we keep alumni going. And I brought Susan a present tonight. I found it in one of our old annuals. They had a Waha' Alumni Association in 1917. And I say no reason to stop it now, you know, I said. So if you know any young kids in those classes, give my phone number away, and Suzie have it. Maybe by fall, after we get all the remarks. Oh, see?
There you go. All right. All right, our next recipient is Scott Morash. Scott, come on up.
Scott, Scott has been involved in supporting the school district since he moved his family here in 1988. When his children were attending Wawa' schools, Scott served as chaperone for school field trips and shared student enrichment programs and senior graduation parties. Scott served on senior culminant project panels for 11 years, listening to the stories of more than 200 graduating seniors. He also helped Wawa' youth learn to ski and compete in the Bluewood Ski Team Program over the years. He supported his wife through years of campus closets where local high school students attending dances could get no cost apparel to wear to the events. Scott, for years, has been active in the Wawa Exchange Club and organized the ducking derby race. I'm surprised he has Nick after a lot of tippies. All the proceeds from the derby stay local to help Wawa Valley children through the exchange club programs. And most recently, it has been my honor to work with Scott as the chair of 2018 Bond Measure, Bond Oversight Committee. This committee was established following the successful 2018 bond measure to provide fiscal oversight, monitor construction plans, and schedules to ensure Wawa taxpayers get the projects they were promised. They have met on 23 separate occasions, toured the sites dozens of times, and carefully scrutinized every contract left, dollars spent, and project delivered. Please join me in recognizing Scott Morash for supporting the district's vision of developing Washington's most thought after graduates.
Scott, do you have the opportunity to stand on something if you want to?
Boy. Anne, congratulations.
I said on your way up.
Yeah. You know, this is, I was talking with Mr. Higgins, Ron, just before here. Volunteering, helping the community is just part of what we do. Hymns, campus closet was an extraordinary venture to that. I'm thankful we're in a community where we have those opportunities. There's just a whole host of everyone out there that knows me or I know them that really supports me and me and this. It's very humbling to be recognized with this, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Close there, close there. Our third and final recipient, please, is Heidi Mindower. Heidi, come on up.
This year, Heidi and her husband are in empty deserts for the first time after six children graduate from the school district. Anne, Heidi continues to volunteer. Over the years, Heidi has been involved in the school district in a variety of ways. When her children were in school, she would serve as a chaperone for their activities, cook meals for the cross-country team, and plan senior parties. At the district level, she has volunteered on calendar committees and lovely fum trees. She could be seen behind the scenes in all of choir activities with Mr. Norv Roski. Heidi was busy setting up, taking down, and feeding kids the drum program as well. She has been an integral part of the Waha' senior parties, activities, and chaperoning and organizing other volunteers in a kind and gentle way. The last four years, with the exception of the COVID closures, she has volunteered in Ms. Butler's middle school science classroom three to five days a week and talking to Ms. Butler, it's about 12 to 20 hours per week. She supports students and the teacher in multiple ways. She often helps kids that have been absent, working with small groups, aiding in lab experiments, but most importantly, building relationships to remind them they have a purpose in the classroom and they're all important. Ms. Butler says Heidi is constantly showing kindness and compassion, and the students are reaping great benefits from her attitude in the classroom. Heidi says volunteering is like being in grand camp, where she gets to be the encourager, cheerleader, and helper. Heidi says she has seen students overcome academic obstacles and behavior challenges and has witnessed shy students by your voice. She encourages more people to volunteer in district schools. Ladies and gentlemen, Heidi Mindower.
How are you all today?
You know, it is humbling, as Scott said. And I would just encourage anybody who has a little time. Our students are worth your time.
All right, let's get a few pictures. Scott, Anne Ray, come on up. Now you have one more picture.
I'm talking to you, I thought you didn't go to Waha'. She's funny.
We're actually making a bunch of plaques.
Oh, yeah.
There we go. Are we looking at like 16 cameras?
I will return to my position, which is long enough to announce the next recognition event that we have coming up. This is also very exciting.
I will turn over to Dr. Lou Brumman.
Hello, President, Viner, members of the board. Dr. Smith is a esteemed guest. So excited to be in person, to share a bit about students. And like our wonderful volunteer was saying, it is about the students and they deserve it. And this is a recognition based on your support of our We All Belong Here campaign. And as we try to remember that belonging is really the center of our work that creates that sense of inclusion and makes kids want to be part of our system, we know our students individually and groups are doing great things. And sometimes we are remiss at seeing the great around us. So to recap, this award is a recognition for students who demonstrate a commitment to belonging, fairness, justice, inclusive practices, and being a source of strength or hope to each other. And tonight, we have two awards that clearly demonstrate the power of student action and student voice. So first, we're going to recognize the Buddy Club from Wawa' High School. And I'd like to invite Jennifer Button Hop and anyone else with her that wants to come to come up here with me. And we have this rather elaborate nomination form, and I just wanted to share a couple of things from the very illustrious denominator, who's also in the bag, that the Buddy Club offers opportunities for students from special education to be part of interactions and activities supported by their peers. Some examples of past projects have included movie nights, game nights, attending sporting or club events as a group, and eating lunch together. This club has been built on the foundation of inclusion and student voice. Activities are generated by students and supported by Jennifer and Alicia. And friendships are built among students who often need advocates in their lives. Students have a club where they belong. Congratulations. And we have one more. We have another Wawa' High School student, a junior, Mickey Joshua. Come on down, please. Mickey received a nomination from Mr. Estes, who can raise this hand, who's in the back here.
Well, we can.
Couple of things. Mickey has taken steps to bring a sense of belonging to all students here at Waha'. She has taken the lead on starting a Black Student Union to create a space where Black kids embrace their Black culture and education on Black history. And the club is open to all students as a place to embrace the sense of belonging and respect. And here's a quote. "I am truly inspired by Mickey's commitment to lead and embrace her fellow students through belonging, hope, and justice for all." Congratulations.
One more picture. Mark, on the way.
Thank you. Next question is communications. So we'll go through them. I'll give you the stock here. We welcome your comments and questions during the time set aside in regular business students courses to comment. Attendees sign up, provide public comment using the sign-up form. And we welcome you to come forward, ask questions, provide recommendations for educational improvement. For policy, board policy, we typically refrain from providing responses following public comments and will ensure follow-up is made if requested and necessary. We ask you adhere to the following guidelines, to state your name, keep your comments brief and to the point. I've got my timer set for three minutes. Please don't reflect adversely on political or economic, you ethic background, character, motives of any individual. If you have a specific complaint about an individual employee, it must be addressed through the superintendent's office, so I'll bring this setting. At this point in time, I've got a list here. First up is Becky Haney Nixon.
Haney Nixon.
Haney Nixon, thank you. So let me get my timer going here.
School board, my name is Becky Haney Nixon. I'm a proud 1980 graduate of Wawa' High School. I have a 17-year-old child who will graduate this year. He has two mothers. It has been a little bit of a challenge sometimes to have him represented in our school. One of the first things that we did when we signed him up for the dual-language program at Essen is we provided a book to his teacher, Mrs. Johnson, called The Family Book by Todd Parr, that talked about all different kinds of families, every kinds of families. Families with one mother, one father, two mothers, two fathers, a mother and a father. Families that live all together with their grandparents and their aunts and their uncles. Families who live in apartments, families who live in trailers, all kinds of families. That book allowed him to be represented in the school. And he took it with him to every class that he went, all through elementary school. I find it very important that we include every type of literature that allows every person to be represented in our school. It is so important for a child's development to know that they are not alone in the world, no matter what that world looks like for them. And it is our job as instructors and as parents and as community members to ensure that every child is represented. All right, enough of that. I want you to know that your transportation department has a rule that says you can't bring anything on the bus that can't be secured. I have a child that we have provided a scooter for so that he can go from Sea Tech to home as opposed to have to ride the bus back to Waha', which makes it a really long travel. They will not allow him to bring that scooter that folds up and will fit in a backpack. They will not allow him to bring that on the bus. I called and questioned, and they said it's because it can't be secured. And I wonder about things like musical instruments. Are they not allowed to be transported? If you have cello, you couldn't transport that back and forth, different things. So just something to think about, and I thank you all for your time.
I have recently lost my voice, and I have asked my husband to come and share with you what I was planning on sharing this evening.
Hello. How are you doing? I don't know if I've mentioned it in my talks before, but I am a lifelong Wawa resident, born and raised. I'm a graduate of Wawa' High School. I am very proud of where I'm from. I wanted to let you know that based on your decisions as a school board and superintendent that we will not be enrolling our two ninth graders in the Wawa Public Schools next year. Now, I know that my two children will not dictate a whole lot of your decisions regarding finances, but honestly, it should. I'm not the only Wawa parent thinking this way. Continually answering questions and concerns with procedures, denials, and things you have no control over are not acceptable answers. There is a reason that you are seeing a decline in enrollment, and it will continue as long as you go down this road. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next on the list is Kathy Dresson.
I would just like to address your enrollment decline for 5,380 students for the next school year. According to your letter that was sent out to the district wide to staff, you were all pointing to the lack of affordable housing as the primary driver for the reason why student enrollment is going down. Well, after talking to numerous teachers around the district and asking them what their first response was when they had read your letter, they said they laughed out loud. They said they were not surprised that was the district's narrative for enrollment decline. Parents are discovering new educational options besides public school and are beginning to take back the reins of their children's education from government bureaucrats and teachers' unions. Beginning in kindergarten on up, public school students are being groomed to question their gender, use of pronouns for people, but use gender-neutral ones. Girls can go to boys' bathrooms and locker rooms, and boys can go into girls' locker rooms and bathrooms, et cetera. Parents want education, not indoctrination. And one more thing, don't forget the books that you left on the shelf because it's not pornographic. I totally agree with the lady that came up earlier that said that everybody should be represented. We have never said that, everybody should be represented. What I do not agree with is your definition of pornographic material. And because of that, I brought this. This is what they left in the school library. For example, if there are books a family would not like their students to have access to, they can provide a list to the librarian, and the students would not be allowed to check them out. If parents prefer opt-out with regard to sex education or specific pieces of literature in the curriculum, they can do so. It seems reasonable and logical that these options would be pursued before banning books and trying to parent everyone else's children. It is also worth noting that a large portion of the senior class are already adults, or very nearly so. I encourage parents who want their students to have access to literature in the high school library and don't want someone else to determine their parenting to let the school board and administration know their thoughts. I also encourage high school students to continue making your voices heard. Oh, and as for that class of 2011 Wahi kid of ours, she now works at a library encouraging others to read as much as possible.
Let me go back and see if I can try. Thank you. Scott Heiner.
No?
Okay. Mary Ann Key.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mary Ann Key, and I am speaking for as many hard-working, tax-paying parents and grandparents who do not want foul-mouthed, violent, sexually explicit books accessible to our children in the school, in the school library specifically. We're not talking public libraries. We're not talking bookstores or purchasing online, et cetera. We are not banning books here, but in the public school, they have no place. How the committee recommends allowing these four books, "The Bluest Eye," "The Hate You Give," "All Boys Aren't Blue," and "Gender Queer" to remain in the school library is mind-blowing. Oh, because you say they are not seen as pornographic? They don't excite sexually? This is not the author's intent? Hmm. When there are not only descriptions of sexual acts, rape, incest, violence, et cetera, but also pictures, as we have seen, of oral sex, it does not matter the intent of the author, but what does matter is how our children are left to process this information. Where has common sense gone? I cannot see how these types of books can be defended. Interesting fact, we were told by the Walla Walla Penitentiary that they would never allow these books at the prison due to all the sex acts, violence, innuendos, because of pornography. So adult males cannot read or look at these books at the prison, but our children can get them at our public schools, resources that our taxpayer dollars go for. Crazy but true. One more reason why my family will gladly make arrangements for private and homeschool education for our children. I just feel sorry and pray for the children that are left behind in public schools that cannot. Thank you.
Sherry Clevee.
Hi. I'm Sherry Clevee. I have a ninth grader and a fifth grader who have attended Walla Walla Public Schools since kindergarten. Neither of them is white, and none of them uses a walker. I want to thank you for your support and encourage you to continue to invest in policies and programs that support equity, inclusion, and social emotional learning for all students. My kids don't have the option to wait until they're eighteen to deal with race and racism. So with their permission, I'm going to tell you just a couple of their stories. My oldest was four when another child at her daycare called her yellow and told her that she would be better off dead. Then the staff denied it happened, and the director told me it must have been language that she'd heard at home. It wasn't until the same thing happened the following day that any action was taken. This entire situation could have been prevented had staff had quality training in equity and inclusion, used SEL curriculum, or read books with diverse characters such as this one, and had discussion about honoring differences. This I.A.M. book about Martin Luther King was banned for a year in a school district in Pennsylvania because parents and some school members said it indoctrinated kids. This book did not indoctrinate kids or cause kids' anguish, any more than I caused kids' anguish when I read books starring Walker and wheelchair users and discussed differences with my youngest daughters, K through two classes. What these books do do is promote empathy. As much as I appreciate the progress that's been made toward belonging in the last five years, as long as my kids or any students are being called the N-word while walking to lunch, having their ethnicity mocked while in class, and being told they don't belong, we have more work to do. I'm stating the obvious when I say that students experiencing racism are not going to perform at their highest potential in class or on state standardized tests. Without quality DDI and SEL policies and programs, you will never get belonging, and without belonging, you will not get high test scores. I'm incredibly grateful to all school board members, school staff, teachers, librarians, and administrators who advocate for all students on a daily basis. It's not easy, but our kids and young adults are more than worth it. Thank you.
Hey, it is Neema. Okay. It's been so long. Hey, you guys. It's been a while. If you just had been Peggy, you would have known. Hey, he is. It would have been enough. Thank you. Now, it has been a while. So I'm here tonight to talk about a program that we've been working on for almost a year. It's called Asking is Caring. It is a pilot site. Walla Walla Public Schools in Richmond School District is pilot media with the University of Washington Smart Center. We have worked to train parents to talk to other parents about mental health and suicide prevention. This has been a very emotional, educational, and valuable experience for me and for the parents that are volunteering their time to reach other parents. We all know that peer-to-peer is a very important part of an evidence-based program. So we will have three parents. We are starting May tenth here in Walla Walla, will be at Pioneer Middle School, and then May nineteenth will be at Sunridge. The classes will be from six to eight P.M. We will have our training facilitators there, and we will have Kristen Doody and myself will be there as well. Basically, what the training will involve is how to pick up warning sites if your kids are struggling, how to start the conversation if you've been afraid and not know how to start the conversation. And there'll be lots of interaction with the parents, also with the trainers. There'll be people there for support if something, you know, should trigger someone. And this is a program brought together by, excuse me, Walla Walla County Department of Community Health, which is where I work, and I'm the coordinator for Reach Out Walla Walla, which is suicide prevention, Walla Walla Public Schools, the University of Washington, University of Washington Smart Center, and Grandmothers Against Gun Violence. So I've brought some flyers. We will have childcare and food provided, and would just encourage you to stop by and listen to the parents. That, you know, we talk about students a lot, but we don't talk about how parents are doing and how they're feeling, and it's a way for parents to come together and support each other in a positive way and get access to resources within the district and outside the district for them and their families. So, any questions? No questions? Okay. So I did bring flyers, so I'm going to give you guys some flyers. There is a QR code for the search or link. And this is a website that is going to be evaluated by the University of Washington, and I don't know what university that is. And then once you go through the QR codes and they ask maybe part of it, you can announce from here. The goal of High Track Success is to aid in the case of statewide. So we are fortunate to have the relationship with the University of Washington, the pilot site, and groundbreakers. Do you have any questions? Did a man have a hand? Was she your maintenance? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for leaning towards the end. That was helpful. So I was going to talk last month, but that would have been a really bad idea because I would have cried and had steam coming out of my ears of frustration. So I went to Hawaii, so now I feel like I'm ready to have a nice, sweet conversation. So what I'm going to talk about today, I think everybody agrees with this, is internet access for kids in elementary school. And anyone who subscribes to like NetBlaze or Hulu or whatever it is knows that parental controls are really easy on those services. I don't have a lot of risk when I do those things, and I also use YouTube Kids for my children, which involves me previewing the things my kids watch, and I send them on their YouTube account, they can watch them. Because my kids are eight, I don't usually let them watch things that I haven't seen because I, I mean, that's why we have these tools. I think that's normal for parents to do. So, but at school, I know that it's a challenge, and I'm not going to act like it's easy, right? We have to figure out how to deal with this, but for now, I have little kids. I have older kids too that are responsible for their internet activity, but I also have little kids. And I'll just give some examples. I do not swear. It's not in me. I try really hard not to, except for some people in this room may have heard me swear as a quote, but I'm not going to do that today because I don't want to. So my son watched a video. He watched somebody else playing a video game, and it would have been rated T for teen, and I'll just give you a few. All I had to do was Google the name of the game while he's crying and refusing to go to school, and parents got, and this is some of the things I read, that a character threatens to rip your nuts off right after your girlfriend finishes gargling wine. And, I'm sorry, some of the most disturbing lyrics, "Kill a kid, cut him up, stuff him up inside my burning dungeon, peel your skin off, tear your eyes out, and turn your girlfriend inside out." I don't think my son heard those things, but he heard other things. I'm not making this up. I mean, there's a severed head on a Christmas tree that's decorated with entrails, and made it really sad, so he's a tender boy, and I apologize for being emotional. I think we're all a little on edge this week, and it's sad to see what happens in the world and what kids have access to, so I apologize. But, and for my daughter, while the boys were doing the violent video games, this is in class on the Chromebooks, this is not, they're not sneaking it, they're just doing it right in the middle of class. My daughters and her friends were watching some video games, not video games, sorry, music videos, and in 1995, I used to sneak down to my neighbors to watch MTV, and it was pretty sweet operation, but I was thirteen, and then my mom stopped it, and then I didn't watch MTV anymore. I have no way to stop my child, who's trying really hard to protect her from things that include the F-word, naked women, can I read one more thing? Just, this is some S-H-I-T that I don't usually do, but for you, I kind of want to, because you're down for me, and I'm down too. Switching positions for you. So we're talking about sex positions, and she heard that at school. And we have to find a way to figure it out, and I gave this notes to all of you. We always do this. And none of you received it, and if anybody else wants to see the rest of my material, I would be happy to email to you. Thanks. We move to reports next, and we start with the E-Team Report. For the Director's Report, we're at the end.
I continue to meet her at High Conference in San Diego. She's attended very well by leaders of her nation, and surprisingly, a bunch of other district tech people in Washington districts. We keep relationships there, and we have to get her some of her firm.
So last week, I did the kindergarten roundup, which was awesome. It was great energy, to see all the little ones study about certain schools. And then also visited these schools on Friday. This is my ex-mate, Garrett, who brought me, or Dr. McDowell, also joined us at Garrett and me also visited C-Tech and Edison, which was great to get out into the schools, see the learning going on, see some of the teachers, and be in the classroom. It was really exciting. I can't wait to get to all of the little ones eventually.
I have a question. I will extrovert to my parent. The kindergarten roundup was absolutely wonderful. It's great to see old friends that we've been separated so long, also school visits, and looking through the reports, the bond work is just, that just makes me so happy, and looking at how soon it is, how very few months left. So that concludes our Board Director's Reports. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Well, we find it very grateful that we're already over time. Thank you so much for both of you that participated, and everyone helped. Two dozen community partners have made our kindergarten and kindergarten roundup a great success, so thank you all for being there. I applaud all of you. Again, also thank you to Director McDowell for joining me in this conference. I encourage all board members who can join with me, just to lighten the scene and eye open to see the amazing things our kids do every single day, our teachers in the classroom. And lastly, as I flew back this afternoon from the Susan Hill Conference over in Seattle, I wanted to let you know that I thank Senator Hewitt for his leadership because of his guidance leadership. We have a skill center at C-Tech, and so I wanted to let you know that I fly on the plane and thank him for his leadership, and he pushed you all well. So with that, I move on to the Superintendent's Report.
And I put the page right to the bond program update.
The report's there. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Lastly, the Enrollment Report, you've seen about eighty pages from last month. Again, I hope that trend continues, as I think I anticipated some of that they do due to the recent vaccine announcement, which is more than. And then May nineteenth will be at Sunridge. The classes will be from six to eight P M. We will have our training facilitators there. And we will have Kristen Doody and myself will be there as well. Basically, what the training will involve is how to pick up warning sites if your kids are struggling, how to start the conversation if you've been afraid and not know how to start the conversation. And there'll be lots of interaction with the parents, also with the trainers. There'll be people there for support if something, you know, should trigger someone. And this is a program brought together by, excuse me, Walawala County Department of Community Health, which is where I work and I'm the coordinator for Reach Out Walawala, which is suicide prevention. Walawala Public Schools, the University of Washington, University of Washington Smart Center, and Grandmothers Against Gun Violence. So I've brought some flyers. We will have childcare and food provided. And we'll just encourage you to stop by and listen to the parents. That, you know, we talk about students a lot, but we don't talk about how parents are doing and how they're feeling. And it's a way for parents to come together and support each other in a positive way and get access to resources within the district and outside the district for them and their families. So, any questions?
Let's put the comments, they cannot.
No questions? Okay. So I did bring flyers, so I'm gonna give you guys some flyers. There is a Q R code for this card or link. And this is a question that is going to be evaluated by the University of Washington. And I don't know what university that is. And then once you go through the Q R codes and they ask maybe part of it, you can announce from here. The goal of my graphic statement is this stage is for young staywites. So we are fortunate to have the relationship with University of Washington City, this stage, pilot site and groundbreakers. Do you have any questions? Did a man have a hand? Thank you for leaning towards the end. That was helpful. So I was gonna talk last month, but that would've been a really bad idea because I would've cried and had steam coming out of my ears of frustration. So I went to Hawaii, so now I feel like I'm ready to have nice, good conversations. So what I'm gonna talk about today, I think everybody agrees with this, is internet access for kids in elementary school. And anyone who subscribes to like Netblakes or Hulu or whatever it is knows that parental controls are really easy on those services. I don't have a lot of risk when I do those things. And I also use YouTube Kids for my children, which involves me previewing the things my kids watch. And I send them on their YouTube account, they can watch them. Because my kids are eight, I don't usually let them watch things that I haven't seen. Because I, I mean, that's why we have these tools. I think that's normal for parents to do. So, but at school, I know that it's a challenge and I'm not going to act like, like it's easy. Right? We have to figure out how to deal with this. But for now, I have little kids, I have older kids too, that are responsible for their internet activity. But I also have little kids. And I'll just give some examples. I do not swear, it's not in me. I try really hard not to, except for some people in this room may have heard me swear as a quote. But I'm not gonna do that today because I don't want to. So my son watched a video, he watched somebody else playing a video game. And it would've been rated T for teen. And I'll just give you a few. All I had to do was Google the name of the game while he's crying and refusing to go to school. And Parents Guide, and this is some of the things I read. That a character threatens to rip your nuts off right after your girlfriend finishes gargling wine. And, I'm sorry, some of the most disturbing lyrics. Kill a kid, cut him up. Stuff him up inside my burning dungeon. Peel your skin off, tear your eyes out, and turn your girlfriend inside out. I don't think my son heard those things, but he heard other things. I'm not making this up. I mean, there's a severed head on a Christmas tree that's decorated with entrails. And made it really sad. So, he's a tender boy. And I apologize for being emotional. I think we're all a little on edge this week. And it's sad to see what happens in the world and what kids have access to. So I apologize. But, and for my daughter, while the boys were doing the violent video games, this is in class on the Chromebooks, this is not, they're not sneaking it. They're just doing it right in the middle of class. My daughters and her friends were watching some video games, not video games, sorry, music videos. And in nineteen ninety-five, I used to sneak down to my neighbors to watch MTV. And it was pretty sweet operation. But I was thirteen and then my mom stopped it. And then I didn't watch MTV anymore. I have no way to stop my child, who's trying really hard to protect her from things that include the F word, naked women, can I read one more thing? Just, this is some S H I T that I don't usually do, but for you, I kinda want to. Because you're down for me and I'm down too. Switching positions for you. So we're talking about sex positions. And she heard that at school. And we have to find a way to figure it out. And I, I gave this notes to all of you.
We always do this.
And none of you received it. And if anybody else wants to see the rest of my material, I would be happy to email to you.
We move to reports next, and we start with the E C Tech report.
I continue to lead a high conference in San Diego. It's attended very well by leaders of relations and surprisingly, a bunch of other district tech people in the Washington districts. We keep relationships there and we have to give our chairs and the ver.
So last week, I did the kindergarten roundup, which was awesome, it was great energy. See all the little ones excited about starting school. And then also visited these schools on Friday. This is my mentor and Garrett, who brought me at, or Dr. McDonald also joined us at Garrett sent me. Also, this is the C Tech and Edison, it was great to get out into the schools, see the learning going on, see some of the teachers and be in the classroom. It was really exciting and can't wait to get to all of the buildings eventually.
I have a question. I will extrovert, Dr. McCarren, the kindergarten roundup was absolutely wonderful. It's great to see old friends that we've been separated so long. Also, school visits and, and looking through the reports, the bond work is just, that just makes me so happy and looking at how soon it is, how very few months left. So, that concludes our board of directors reports, moving on to the superintendent.
Well, we find it very grateful that we're already over time. Thank you so much for both of you that participated. Everyone helped, two dozen community partners that made our kindergarten and kindergarten roundup a great success. So thank you all for being there and applauding. Again, also thank you to Director, well, Karen, Dr. McDonald for joining me in this conference. I encourage all board members who can join with me, just to lighten the scene and eye open to see the amazing things our kids do every single day, our teachers in the classroom. And lastly, as I flew back this afternoon from the Susan Hill Conference over in Seattle, I wanted to let you know that I thank Senator Hewitt for his leadership because of his guidance leadership. We have a skill center at C Tech. And so I wanted to let you know that I fly on the plane and thank him for his leadership and he pushed you all well. So with that, I can move on to the superintendent.
And I put the page right to the bond program update.
The reports there, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Lastly, the enrollment report, you've seen about eighty percent from last month. Again, I hope that trend continues as I think I anticipated some of that due to the recent vaccine announcement with the Department of Health made with the doctor part of vaccines for teens. I think that has talked to super colleagues across the state. Some of them are seeing those numbers trickle back out because of that impact. So we'll continue to carefully monitor that, we have only two months left.
Thank you. Trying to expedite this, moving on. This is Taylor, the financial report.
Summary, summary, summary.
President Lauder, Board of Supervisors, I will try to talk fast, but not too fast. So, let's see here. We're starting off with our February revenue. As you'll see, our local taxes and local non-tax is pretty much within what our projections are. Our state general purpose came in a little bit higher than anticipated. Primarily, we had some cumulative summer meal payments come in, which was both of that bulk of that additional revenue. Federal general purpose, again, that stays pretty flat every month because that's our N J R O T seed reimbursement. Federal special purpose revenue, this is the kind of the bump that we've been waiting for based on the adjustments that we made to staffing. And we were able to do a retroactive claim against our S R funds. And so we had September through this January payroll that we have got reimbursed for as we move forward. We'll just be having, you know, lovely claim reimbursement, so we won't see quite that big a jump again. But at least it did kinda help us catch up to where we wanted to be. And then our revenue for school districts. We have a special ed student that Dayton provides us some supplemental resources for. And that was our first time payment from them. And so we'll be seeing that about every other month, we should be getting billings from them. So overall, our revenues for, for February were seven point eight million dollars. Our four-year average as a February year-to-date total has been forty-six percent. Our average or our percent for this year as a percent of our budget is forty-five percent. So when we think about our four-year cumulative compared to where we are this year, we're really, you know, still within what is, has been pretty normal on average for us. And as you see, we did bump back into the green again as our, as we've reduced that gap that we had in between. Any questions on revenue? And then as we move to expenditures, our payroll for, for February was a little higher than anticipated. February is the month that we have sick leave cash outs, annual cash outs available for employees. The last few years, we have, staff has not taken full advantage of that opportunity, where we saw more staff take advantage of cashing out some of their sick leave balance. So that's our primary difference there with our payroll. And then our accounts payable continues to trend below what our projections are. So between the trade-off of payroll and accounts payable, we had projected seven point two in overall expenditures and we're at seven point three. And again, for February, our four-year average has been forty-six percent of budget. And our current for this year as a percent year-to-date is forty-seven percent. So we are trending just slightly higher in our expenditures overall for year-to-date. But again, our variance is within our, the colors that we prefer. Any questions on expenditures? And then just to shake up our colors here a little bit, we changed our text font to white to make the red not look quite so glaring, hopefully. But you will see that overall with our revenue and expenditures, the ending fund balance variance continues to increase a little bit. So where, right now, we're at five point four million for our ending fund balance. That does put us just slightly below the six percent minimum fund balance. So again, we are in that upward trend of where we expect to be as we continue throughout the rest of the school year. Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Number eight is a resolution on participation in the baby education. Do you want to explain that for your team? Did I? I did, whole lunch. Yeah, number five.
I'm back President Lauder, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees. And I have, I want to introduce these three fine, courageous, outstanding individuals that are gonna stand up here with me and then have a chance to share a little bit about themselves. But this is, and I'm going to try to be the tallest, Jennifer Hernandez from Green Park. You have Esmeralda Pedrosa from Walawala High School. And Oscar Brito from Pioneer Middle School. And they are three of our nine home visitors. And we are very excited that they're here tonight, thank you for being here. So just to share a little bit of our home visitor experience, as you know, we have nine home visitors in all. And do I have a? Oh, this.
Keyboard.
Oh, the keyboard. I feel like I have the power again. So this is just to give you an overview of their positions and details of what a home visit might look like, an understanding of the types of professional development that's sort of ongoing and fluid. Because remember how I always share, in terms of the work we do with our families and with our communities, case by case, every family might need something different. And every family might need us to listen to their voice and help us understand what they need. And so sometimes how we support changes. These three are gonna give you kind of a sense of the voices from the field. And then we have a little time for question and answers. So who are our home visitors? So we have nine in total as part of our S R funded Student Wellbeing Plan that the board funded. And each of our elementary schools has a home visitor. There are two home visitors, one at each middle school, and then there are two at the high school. And these nine staff members truly deliver specialized supports that is an intention to create a connection that makes sure students have success within the classroom and that they come to school and that we are wrapping our arms around those families to make sure those families feel that outreach is effective. So, a big part of their role daily is visiting homes. And that outreach focuses on attendance concerns, resources, community network, and other supports the family may need to ensure success. However, I have to say that moving on from a pandemic has made it even more important for us to approach families with an incredible amount of sensitivity and, and baby steps. Because it's tough to go back into a big school setting when you've been home. And so the skill level and the sensitivity that our home visitors are able to step up and provide has been so important and, and super valuable. So the quote is that they conduct home visits and make those connections with parents and set educational goals for students in collaboration with the parents. We don't want to leave the parent or the guardian or the person that helps support that student at home out of the loop. It's very important that we continue. We just reassess all the time, right? And what works with one family down the street might not work with another family. So how do we do that? And how we started this out in the summer was, was a huge lift, totally worth it because our families are what matter. But we've done a lot of things in our trainings that can kind of change month to month. So we might, today we had a meeting and we talked about our best tip or tool that works with families that we could share. We receive ongoing resources about families in transition, foster care. We work with Child Protective Services. We make sure our home visitors have the language of our building belonging. We have several families that are considered migrant and we want to make sure they have information about migrant resources. The thing is, what falls on these amazing individuals is no matter what professional development we give them, they have to know their families at such an intense level that they can figure out how to ask parents, what do you need? It's not about Oscar or Esmeralda or Jennifer going to a house and saying, hey, I got a deal for you. These are the ten things you need to do as a family and get back to school. It's not like that. We need to set a tone where that respect for the family comes first. And so there's a lot of moving parts with figuring out what each family needs. And in addition, because lots of our families are bilingual, we do some protocols for interpreter training, lots of check-ins with these groups, see now, go to all the buildings, how's it going? What do you need? How can we help you so that you can support families? They share guidance and sky words so that if a sibling, you know, for example, Jennifer's at Green Park, she might be working with a family. And that same family might have a student at Pioneer. And that same family might have a student at Walawala High. Well, we wanted, we don't want to overwhelm a family with three separate visits. We want to make sure we're coordinating efforts. And then our resources are continually updating. At our meeting today, we had B Mac participate and share some resources that were hot off the press. So our resource list is constantly updated because our families have constant needs that change. And we want to make sure that our approach as home visitors is a dynamic one that meets their needs. So what hope happens on a home visit? We reach out to families for a variety of reasons. But that building relationship of trust and respect that is ongoing takes time. Oscar might make a home visit and nobody answers the door. He might make a phone call and say, I want to come visit, I want to, I want to see how I can help you. And it might take a couple of times to build that trust and that relationship piece. Setting a tone that's respectful, that's appropriate, that's sensitive, these are pieces that are really important because the whole plan is to connect with the family, to make sure the student has a successful experience within the school. Sensitivity is key. And I use this a lot in, in the work we do with Equity. Suspend assumptions. So, oh, I recognize that last name, or I know this family, I've heard about this. We can't do that. Our goal is to get kids in school and have them have successful experiences. So we have to put our assumptions out and meet the family where they are. Ask for the family what works in terms of meeting. And I've shared this before, when I was doing some visits in another school district. Boy, I was, I was really working hard to connect with this family. And I was using all my, my loving nurturing skills. And finally, I just, I said, oh, and it was suspended, I said, ah, señora, que tengo que hacer? What can I do? And she said, you shouldn't come till grandma's home. One time this grandma get home. She'll be here at seven, do you want to wait? Okay, I'll wait, I'll sit outside and wait. Those kinds of things we need to ask because we don't know who the decision maker is or who's the person in that household that has that advocacy level with the student. And then share resources, once our families share what they need, we find resources. And then this is key, and Esmeralda, we've talked about this at the high school. Find a way to connect again. Oh, it was a great visit, when can I come back? Don't walk away and that's that, because it's an ongoing connection we want for our students. Log those visits so we're connecting and then check in with that student at school. Right? Because we want to make sure that the student knows, oh, that's the same person that came to my house and they really care to me, care about me and they're here at school. So that's kind of the, the overall piece. But I wanted, I know we just have a few minutes, but I wanted these amazing people to share with you a little bit of like a day in the life. You want to start Jennifer, because you're closest to me?
I'll keep this really short. My name is Jennifer Hernandez and I am at Green Park Elementary School. My current work on a day-to-day basis is really just coming in. Sometimes it works out just great having two people, being a home visitor and a home liaison because the need, at least at Green Park, is really great. As in, a lot. But home visits, I do about two to three a day depending on the need for either attendance check, meeting needs of families. A lot of my time in December and January was handing out homework for COVID. And we would go door to door and we would see signs that family needed, you know, to pay for their water or their electricity bill because people weren't working. But they're not voicing that either out of embarrassment or, you know, whatever it could be. And having somebody go there to that home and seeing that and kind of working behind the doors, checking in with the teachers, hey, what's your relationship with this parent? How can we help? Not making them feel bombarded, but also connecting with other staff members to see how they can help the family if they're not feeling so comfortable with a new person. We've had many success stories, but one of my favorites, since it is my first year at the school district, was helping a family move from a shelter to an actual home. And then getting the school involved, can we get furniture? How can we help with bedding? How can we help with, you know, et cetera? Yeah, that's kind of a little bit of what I have.
Hello. My name is Latnala Padrelexa and I want to start off by thanking you all for having me here. I work at the Walawala High School, so I work with ninth through twelve graders. So I spend most of my time working with teenagers, which is exciting and fun. Every day is different with this job, which I think is what makes it so interesting because we're going in and, you know, it's, it just varies day by day. I mean, one day you go on a ton of home visits and you're able to connect with a ton of families. The next day, you're knocking from door to door and not getting any answers. The amount of home visits that we get or that we go to vary from day to day. There are times where we have up to five or 10 visits a day. And that's just because of how many students we have at our school. And they're spread out through all, through our workday due to the parents' availability, which makes it a little tough for us. But I mean, we knew going into the stuff that we needed to be a little flexible with our time. So I can't really complain there. And there are different reasons for why we conduct home visits. Sometimes we have parents who call us because their child is having a mental breakdown. So we go and try to help the parent figure that out. Other kinds of because of attendance. And it's interesting because we recently got our type two license. So we're able to go to these visits and we talk to the student. And then sometimes the student's like, well, I didn't go to school because I didn't have transportation. We're like, oh, we'll hop on the bus, as creepy as that may sound, but we're like, hop onto the bus and we can take you to school.
Type two is the smallest.
Especially the white ones, those are the worst. We try to check in with families on a regular basis just to see how they're doing, how we can support them and see how we can help their child succeed. Thankfully, I can stand up here and say that we've had a lot of positive outcomes with our home visits. There are many families who have suffered from tragic events this year. So it just, it's been really rewarding to be able to go to their home and to see what they need and let them know that we're not alone and just providing them with the necessary resources has been really helpful to the family in our community. Thank you.
Oscar.
Hi, my name is Oscar Brito. I'm Pioneer Middle School, grades from six, seven to eight. And, well, home visits change. Sometimes there are different circumstances each family faces. So that's what we have to do every day. We have to, we go to a family and we see a different situation considering another family. But it all adds up to the attendance. But each one is going through an obstacle different from the other. So we have to get creative. We don't come in thinking, oh, this is what we're gonna do, this and that. We have to hear them out. And that's what we do, we're like, what's going on? How, how can we help you? Because we're trying to evade truancy, so we're here to help you. And that's usually how I set the tone with most of the parents. And it really helps them to see that I'm just there to help you. I'm not doing the point fingers and saying, you need to get your kid to school right now. So that's what I do. And one of my home visits that I really cherish a lot, sometimes it's not really words that gets parents going. Sometimes just showing up to the door, even though they won't answer or open us the door, they still see that we care and we care about the education. So they change. And that's what happened with one of our students who had like really bad attendance, is that there was a lot of hygiene problem going on too as well. Is that we kept going just to see, we're trying to get this kid to school as much as possible and try to get the family as well in a good condition to be living in. Well, we kept going in and, well, they wouldn't answer us the door. Until finally, we showed up one day, everything was nice and clean. They opened the door, house in there, not how the student had described it. The student had described it was a lot of, a lot of stuff going on in there, a lot of hygiene issues. But it was all clean, it smelled clean. And then not only that, the student's attendance improved. So it was really one of the best experiences I've had as a home visit. And there's been others, but that's my favorite one. There's also, like Esmeralda said, there's also the negative part where you just go every day and sometimes they just don't open the door. But they know we're there. But they know we're there, they hear us, and you know, they, they kind of get a little message from that. Like, hey, I need to get my kid to school or something. But as we say, we don't pressure parents. We try to make a relationship with them first. And we try to help them out because that's what we're there for.
So as you can see, the, the, it's the full gamut of what we experience. And we ask our, our home visitors to give us lots of examples of how to help. And I, I did want to share that a home visitor that's not here tonight says that that experience of knocking and knocking and knocking went on for a long time with a student this year. And the student came up with her on campus and said, I came to school because I was pretty sure you were never going to stop knocking. So I just showed up and she was like, huh, it worked. Nobody ever opened the door. But it could have been that the parent said, listen, you got to go because I'm tired of the knocking. So there's so many ways to, to show our commitment and our concern. These three individuals really, they demonstrate the, the tenacity and perseverance that we're going to make that connection and we're going to figure out what works and how can we help these families to get you here. So I don't know if you have any questions for our last two's three?
That went pretty good. Does one of the high school home visitors cover Lincoln?
Lincoln has their own folks as well, yes.
Okay.
They have, yes. They have coverage too. But the, the Esser-funded ones, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Smith, those are the ones at the high school. Yeah. Other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I won't skip one of those six. This is more responsibility.
It is.
Did you mean some of the brief ones?
Oh, I will be very brief. So this will be one of three times I'm in front of you about materials. So this is just a quick update. So I will be very brief because I know you have the slides. We are ending the cycle of that first round of adoption that we established with the last strategic plan. So one being K5 science materials. I think what's really critical is how long it's been. We know there's new science standards. The new materials that are out there are phenomenon-based, meaning that it anchors in an event versus just teaching general knowledge. So that's what's really critical. And you'll see that in the materials that we're looking at is to replace those kits with the phenomenon-based ones, like I said, versus just the general knowledge. So again, like we usually do, we've taken the last nine months to go through the process of vetting materials that are aligned. We look at external reviews, nonprofit reviews. We bring four or five of those to the table. We have a committee of review teachers look at those. From that, they select down to a set of two materials, which we'll talk about today for elementary. And then from there, we're in the current process of piloting those materials. And so when we come back to you in May, it'll be to present you with one of those that has risen to the top, been through the instructional materials committee and also gotten feedback from community and parents. For you to look at, we were really intentional this time, obviously, too, about having dual teachers involved because both sets of materials this time come in English and Spanish. And we looked at materials that had not only student materials in Spanish, but also teacher materials to the best that, that we could find, which is a really new, I would say, evolution in curriculum materials has been very challenging. So we appreciate curriculum companies responding to that. So just so you have the quick overview, Amplify and Smithsonian are those two companies of materials that we are out there piloting right now. You'll see some similarities to it. I would say that either one of them would be ones that we would be happy to bring to you. So this is really about the use and teacher use and how kids respond and that student engagement that we're going to look at through the pilot process and bring to you. The second pilot we're doing, which I referenced the last time I was here with the SEL team, is the SEL materials. We're looking at PK through 12. Again, just to anchoring and what is that social emotional learning? We say SEL a lot. It's that building awareness of your own skills, managing your emotions, setting school, uh, goals, establishing relationships. The, that's what we're talking about when we look about these social emotional materials. And we know the correlation to better academics and engagement when kids are socially emotionally regulated. Again, why the adoption? We have standards in this state now. And we have been looking at curriculum materials that are now out there that meet, they focus on things like courage, perseverance, honesty, respect, things that we've taught along the way, but not taught systematically. So what's really great about adopting materials that are aligned systematically is that we can build on those skills as kids move from elementary to middle and high school. And again, many times tonight, we've also heard increasing academic success and that sense of belonging. So helping kids welcome each other and have that sense of belonging is really key when we look at these materials. The research benefits there, I'll leave that for you to read. Again, overview of the process. We were last spring, we reviewed materials that we were able to quickly implement this year for the year. We knew we wanted to start the school year with them. So we've been piloting those materials at elementary. It was Harmony SEL. At the middle schools, it ended up that one school was doing Character Strong and another school was using Panorama. We brought teams together already and I think we're going to, we're going to make a shift. At the middle school level, I would say we've made that decision pretty much to go with Character Strong. So the school that hasn't been using it is going to use it. And in elementary, we've had the opportunity to look at the elementary version of Character Strong, which is called Purposeful People. And had Jennifer Madsen and I took our counselors over to College Place last week. They've been using it already for years. So we had a chance to see the lessons in action and to see how they wrap that program around schoolwide. So that's included in what we've been doing. We've had counselors and PE and health teachers involved at the middle school because going forward and working with our middle school teams, our principals, counselors, PE and health teachers is a combination of that. We don't want the SEL lessons to sit over here as an isolated event, nor the health lessons. And so how do we leverage our PE, health teachers in combination with our counselors and leveraging each of their expertise to create something that happens across the year? And like I said, not in an isolated time period. So feedback, you can see both of the feedback from the elementary materials on there. I think really what it comes down to is with Purposeful People, there are also many other components that you can use schoolwide, you can use district-wide. It's not just about the classroom level. And we're also looking at building that classroom teacher capacity. That Purposeful People had more of those pieces that I would say are easier to pick up as a classroom teacher in between the times the counselors are there. As we move to counselors not being the sole deliverers of that material, but that's embedded, there's ways you can do it every day. And that was one of the great things we saw in College Place is there's teachers that are doing it every day versus the 45 minutes every two weeks. So it has some flexibility in the program for that as well. From the middle school pilots, it was really, Panorama ended up being too clunky. Panorama was a consortium of many, many sets of materials from companies. And originally, the thought, hey, this is great. It offers a lot of flexibility. You can tailor it to what kids are telling you, what the data is telling us. And what we found is that more of the systematic approach with Character Strong and the way the lessons are laid out was something that was much more preferred by not only the adults, but by kids. It just had more continuity to it and easier to use in that systematic way. And it'll end up aligning K12 if this is the way we go, which is, which is always a benefit. So next steps, like I said, continuing to pilot, actually, both in the science ones and SEL. Those pilots will end very soon because May's right around the corner. Those materials will be on display from May 5th to May 12th. So we publicize that. We get it out as many ways as we can. People can come look at it. There's comment cards. Any of you who are to come, welcome to come preview it ahead of time. We'll do the family community presentation where it's more of the formal presentation. Again, people can ask specific questions, look at materials. The instructional materials committee will then meet. So they look at all the reviews from the teachers, the community input, all of those pieces along the way to make sure, according to 2020, we follow the policies. And then I'll come back to you on May 17th with the final recommendation for each of those content areas with the hope that then in our June meeting, we're able to officially approve those and then move forward for the 22, 23 school year implementation. So that's the really quick version. So any questions?
Will we be able to find details on like the family and community presentation on the webpage?
We'll post, we'll do what we always do, get it out to the best we can, the paper, ParentSquare webpage. We want to spread wide and far, yes.
So you have also a lot of science.
Okay.
What is it?
They are still kits. They're upgraded, so different companies even. And what's really different, I would say, about the kit is the way they're intended to be used. So it'll launch with this phenomena. And then there's still materials in it, you still get the bin. But instead of just having kids follow directions with the materials, they actually explore them more, I would say, first and come to conclusions versus it being the other way around. So yes, there's still, there's still coming kits. But there's a lot of electronic tools as well. So there's, like I would say, non-pickup videos. There's a lot of text in them as well. So in that bin is also a lot of reading material for kids to engage with.
And then 2013, any rumors, concerns, thoughts about the new standard shift?
I have not heard one, but I will, will dig and double check just to make sure. I'll get back to you in a moment.
So I have a question about, just more generically, about curriculum changes and budgeting and cost of analyzing, piloting new programs, acquiring curriculum. I realize it's probably a line item in the budget, but I'm just trying to understand as we're going into this next budget cycle, how that fits.
So it factors in, so we have an allocation through the strategic plan of what we have every year. So part of when we developed that five, six-year plan, we staggered things, not only not overload one particular grade level, but to spread, spread it out from, from a purchasing price. And in working with Director Taylor as well, we look at, we work with companies on different options. For example, with the science kits, it'll be, right now, we have a rotation where there's, there's a fall, winter, spring rotation. So we don't have a kit for every second grade teacher, for example. We have enough that we can rotate through those three different times. So that's one way we take within the budget and say, okay, do we continue with that three-cycle rotation? Or would we be in a position where we buy every teacher a kit? More when things are now coming online, like textbooks are online. In past adoptions, like with social studies, it has readers for kids in Spanish and English. We don't buy a textbook necessarily for every kid now. We buy a set for every classroom. And then there's aspects that they can then access online with their Chromebook to finish reading or do some of that work. So it's, it's that balance between now the technology and actually the hard textbook and then the number of kits that we're going to buy. So those are ways that we work within our budget to say, okay, what, how would we maximize our dollars and what teachers and kids need? And then I work with Nancy sometimes too, to get multi-year subscriptions, like with our math materials that sometimes come with a, with a bit of a discount if you are willing to bundle for five years, which also works really well with the adoption cycle.
And in terms of assessment for these programs, how was that handled?
There's assessment pieces built in. So there's formative and a summative. So formative, along the way, a teacher for, I'm talking science specifically, can see how kids are doing along the way to respond and meet the standards. And then there's one at the very end, that summative one, that over that course of the whole unit, how did students do to meet those standards? The assessment for the SEL portion of it is, is not quite as tight, I would say, because it is, we're talking about perseverance, we're talking about grip, we're talking about teaching those skills. How do you welcome kids in? So that's a little bit more anecdotal. But when we look overall at building data and referrals and time spent in class, that data, similar to what we talked about last time with the SEL team, plays into some of that, how well are the materials working?
So any interoperability features that are built into this?
So the science platforms, what I've seen so far is they, they integrate with Google Classroom. There's online, live online. I saw the one for Smithsonian specifically, online grading. So as kids are taking the assessment, they can take it electronically and a teacher can monitor how they're doing so they can respond in the moment and say, hey, Eric, it looks like we're struggling on this one. What can I do to help? We don't have that feature that then functions with our elementary grade book at this time because of the way Oasis is set up. So, but teachers can export like a grade sheet for every one of those assessments or exit tickets that they get along the way, so.
So no automated?
I need to know more about the rostering. I don't know specifically about that, but I will look into that as well and let you know what I found out. Thank you.
Wanted to put on a solution on making.
We're now the.
That was a discussion.
Six, seven?
Keeping me on track.
One, two, three.
I guess.
Greatly, super nice. Well, you pull up, I have a question on the two presentations you're on. So I went back and looked, like I thought five home visitors sort of, for more or less schools based on acquisition, or somebody funded, uh, that's a value, or we get more than that. No, those home visitors are all in there. Okay. Okay, there's more than that was in the past.
Was it the one that I guess about the, which is very?
It's so. And yours up there, we've got two, I like to be. Well, okay, very good to remember that these threads, intervention specials and science that would be home visitors, that's probably why there's some confusion. And some of those, we had two. One maybe is down more home visitor focused, one is in intervention specials. So that person was already in the budget of intervention sessions. I'm assuming that might be, and I think that was probably a pretty good line. Okay. So and then would all of the funded issue with Esser funding?
Not all of them are funded.
The line items, I'd say, are really only the new ones who are Esser funded. Thanks. So I know as Susie presented, or I have a lot of my stuff in front of me. I know this is very, very small, so maybe you can zoom in there. Nancy, please join me up here. I know we're, we're running out of time here, so I'll try to be brief. But the beauty behind having and wrapping up the legislative session is we now have access to more refined budget projection tools that are now updated based on all of the numerous changes that took place in the legislative session. Many of you know, they finally funded some of the purposeful school model we've been rallying on for thirty years now, funding some of the first stage of the three-stage rollouts of social emotional learning. But here's where we sit as of today, with a pretty good understanding of what does our reality look like now? Know what our revenues are, know what our potential expenditures are and what does that mean for our district financially as we develop and finalize next year's budget for year review and approval. The other left hand corner, I think the most important aspect of the point is, is what was the starting balance in our checking account, right? What do you project as of this afternoon is the ending balance in our checking account this year? I mean, very simplistic about that and trying to make this, make sense for all of us to wrap our heads around. And as of more realized, and as we instructed last year, we want to make sure that we strategically spend down our initial fund balance reserves to support our kids. We know that our staff and our kids need that extra support this year. In addition to Esser funding, we need to make sure we go all the way to support our students' social, emotional, academic well-being as we result and recover from this pandemic. You can see, we started this year about $8.36 million, so beginning fund balance. As of this afternoon, about a $5.95 million projection, that's what Director Taylor showed you earlier. We anticipate that even a little bit over the course of the next three to four months if we close out this fiscal, we anticipate finishing in the yellow above the six percent in fund balance. And as of today, you know, aligned with the reports we saw, that's kind of where we stand. So you can see, we have strategically spent out reserves, planned to strategically spend out reserves this year. As we roll into revenue outlook, of revenue this year, what we actually think we're going to get, not what our budget book says, because of course that was based off a different enrollment number we provided this day, what do we actually think we're going to get in revenue? What do we then project we think we're going to get in revenue based off of now, the board's instructed enrollment forecast number to use next year, as well as all of the legislative changes that we're seeing throughout the recent days literally of our legislature. So you can see, we've broken this down into kind of the big chunks. The basic ed, we're using the state's multi-year tool. It's available for anyone to pull up on the OSPI's website. You can input the numbers and get the very similar results. We have both our LEA and our levy. Both of those go hand in hand with respect to the voter approved levy. Remember, levy is what's created locally. LEA backfills us as additional money we get from the state in addition to help support our students from that levy, LEA. That's not bond. Remember, levies for learning, bonds for rebuilding. That's the levy, LEA result. You'll also see the Esser dollars we plan to spend down based off some of the projected tools that we have used and reviewed in previous board meetings. We have that one-time after-school summer school grant that Director Cummings has presented before. Then we have lending in all of our federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. And so apples to apples, you can see as you roll down basic ed, LEA, levy, Esser, after-school and federal grants based on these assumptions, we think we're going to have about $170,000 less in revenue next year than what we project receiving this year. The biggest switch giving us leading off of that federal Esser dollar. Remember, spending right now somewhere near about $6 million at Esser. Next year, it'll be about $3.5 million. And I kind of provided that tool to the right-hand side to show you generally what we've talked about over recent months and over about the last year and a half of how we need to wean ourselves off of the federal dollars. And all of it has to spend by October 1, right? You can see, October 1, I think, of 2024. And we talked about kind of bleeding that out. So about $6.9 million this year, we budget, but we can hopefully spend about $6.2 million in Esser funds. When you add in the after-school summer school, it ends up being about $7 million. Next year, it'll be about $4.1 million total, $3.5 from Esser, $600,000 in. six hundred thousand dollars extends to last that, that short-term after-school summer school grant. Leads to about three point five million for the 2023-24 school year, and a very small amount to make up our payroll. It actually is coned into the 24-25 school year, it's probably as a result of the 23-24 expenditure basis, kind of a little bit of a remaining there left over. So based off of that, it kind of provides the revenue assumption. Let me get into expenses, now we'll stop talking to Director Taylor and any questions you may have. As many of you know, many of our staff members, although some are maxed out at the end of the salary schedule, many of our staff members are, as part of their contract, like a barring, they own a step. You know, again, you're two, you're three, you're four, you're five, maybe you're a master, you need a master plus forty-five because you've gone back to school and you have more credits. And Director Taylor does a marvelous job putting all the staff in there just to give staff a step. Their guaranteed step as part of their contract is just shy of a half million dollars. That is before these sort of C P I type of rates, that's just honoring that step, that is due to the staff that are, are more than earn that step. I was asked by to put in a projection of what would it cost if we were to give every staff member, across every, every employee group, a three percent cost of living rate? Now, we know the state has programmed in the opportunity for up to a five point five percent raise, give or take, but this is just again for, for projection purposes. Basically, a three percent raise for our entire employee workforce, about a one point three six million dollar increase over current costs. We also have, again, availability fuels and contract increases. We have contracts that are baked in and have built-in C P I increases. We know we're working very closely, closely with Director Griffith, and the significant increase we're seeing in diesel fuel costs because for our students, that is now the gas level's doubled in recent months. And so just a cost of those known roll-up factors, known roll-up costs, and utility increases that ride around three point sixty-five thousand dollars. We have some mandatory built-in baked-in requirements that our legislature has approved yet not to fund, but there are some baked-in requirements we have, beginning with insurance increases, retirement rate increases, associated payroll cost increases, that's gonna be about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that being an employment cost, insurance increases as a result of the pandemic, that we have to then bake into our budget as a mandatory employee cost. But we do know that we worked very hard diligently, as you, as we discussed in the previous meetings, Director Gardea, Director Pampow, many others have been instrumental in helping work collaboratively with our employee groups as we tried to begin weaning down our staff, we tried to attrition out our staff and reduce staff according to our new and realized student enrollment, primarily to kindergarten, first grade level, but there are a few other staff members that we have held on this year that we knew were staff in addition to what would normally be predicted and required, and as the board instructed, to spend down our income fund reserves to support kids, to reduce class sizes, to support the social emotional needs. We're going to, and work to identify about thirty positions, depending across about eight hundred employees, about thirty positions. Nearly every one of these being non-replacements of retiring positions, collapsing of positions, being very creative in some cases, but being able to, you know, hopefully anticipate that everyone who has a job, who intends to be coming back next year, we've got a place for them, there may be some people shifting grades, as we know. You know, we have four kindergarten teachers at Sharpstein, we probably only needed two this year. We kept on extras to provide, you know, really reduce class size numbers. You know, one of those kindergarten teachers may be from the first grade teacher next year, maybe a second grade teacher. But again, working closely with our employee groups association, Assistant Assistant Area does a great job. That induces about payroll costs of about two point six million dollars. Okay, so that, again, that's significant costs. If we were to look at some sort of C P I increase, we have the mandatory roll-up costs. But all in all, using that process, we're being able to reduce our expense projection by about two hundred and one thousand dollars next year. So you can see, looking at this, all things being equal, this is where we go out with our student enrollment based off of the fifty through eighty. It would be baking this assumption of some sort of cost of living adjustment, it's around this area. You can see that expenses just match revenues when it comes to about two hundred thousand dollars less in revenue, about two hundred thousand dollars less in expenses, that'll keep your roughly six to six and a half percent income balance flat. Say any more of that? Again, if you increase expenses, we're gonna have to decrease or increase expenses. We're gonna have to look at that for revenue standpoint, have to look at other ways to backfill that. And so Nancy, I'll turn over to you for any other updates, and then ask the board, if they have any questions that they have about this very preliminary hot-off-the-press legislative session update.
Yes, and so as Dr. Smith mentioned, you know, while we're looking at cost savings in staff attrition, remember our revenue was really generated by our F T E. And so while we're saving resources with some of staff attrition, because we are still operating off of a reduced F T E, overall, that's going to continue to, you know, provide that reduced revenue. And so as long as, you know, we, we still are ultimately percentage-wise, salary makes up the bulk of our budget. So if we're still looking at ninety percent of our salary as being, you know, the, the big cost of the district, and if we, you know, go beyond, you know, a certain percent for salary increases, then that really does have an impact on what we can do with everything else. And while our allocation is out to school buildings is not a large percent of our miscellaneous dollars, the areas that we do have a larger percentage going out to is like our facility and operations, you know, and the different things that have to be done to maintain, you know, us district-wide. And of course, you know, just our regular energy, you know, power, water. And while, you know, there maybe will be a minimal amount of cost savings because people have to make kids flush in the toilet, overall, we're still gonna be paying, you know, pretty much the same, the same amount of money, you know, for all of our basic, you know, essential operating needs. And so that is one thing to really think about when we're looking at, you know, where we're going to target salaries at and what's gonna be left over for everything else. The one advantage I would say, or one of the things that I think is beneficial for us, even though we're seeing no reduction in our F T E, some of our program funding, when we talk about C T E, special education and bilingual funding, our numbers have stayed consistent there. If anything, we've seen an increase in our bilingual and an increase in special ed. Our C T E funding has stayed very, very steady. You know, so for those areas where we get some of that enhanced funding, we're not gonna see any impact to that, you know, even though we are overall seeing an impact with enrollment. So, you know, in that respect, that's good, we're not seeing an overall decrease in those areas that would have additional significant impact to our funding. You know, so, yes, so, you know, so those are some of the considerations for us to be looking at when we have some, some controls. We do, you know, as I've mentioned before, we've got some concerns about transitioning from the free summer food program and going back to paid meal program and making sure that we, you know, really push and advocate to get the applications in so that we can maximize our free reduced percentages so that we can continue, can continue to maintain and maximize the funding that we'll receive off of all of our title programming and our lap funding as well. So, you know, that's gonna be something that, I know I've spoken with Director Millison about that, and there's some of the things that we can do to, you know, maybe incentivize families to do that. So those are just some of the additional things for us to consider.
Questions for Director Taylor?
So this three percent C P I number is basically directly tied to the staff attrition number, if that case is?
If we don't wanna try to maintain the balanced budget and keep us within the six, six and a half percent in balance policy.
What other options? I mean, quite low, six percent really?
Well, it's not really an option, because you do have board policies, that's where we need to be. So if, you know, I think we'd end up having to change our policy, you know, or make some kind of amendment to that if we were going to specifically target that we were going to end below that. You know, we are.
Those are the two numbers that we really are in, once.
Yes. But, you know, we're looking at everything from, you know, what type of, you know, just contracts do we not need to renew? And then looking at even like our copier contracts. Several years ago, we did just a three-year lease instead of a five-year lease, and we've got a dollar buyout, you know, to have all those leases. Well, in theory, we still have two good years of usage on those machines. So if we can save almost a hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollars a year by paying a dollar to buy our copiers, I mean, those are the kind of things that we're looking at of, you know, where can we have cost savings? We have licenses for some of our software that we have, that over history, they've gapped where we have mid-year cycles. So let's say from April to April into the next year, and so going back and realigning some of those contracts that are just annual to make sure that we're kind of not overlapping some of our expenditures there. So, you know, basically looking at everything we possibly can that is not necessary, where we can find some cost savings.
But those are more or less pennies compared to the?
They're pennies, but, you know, I mean, there's some things do we really need to continue with X, Y, Z program that is an add-on, you know, for departments, you know, that they're doing it because they're used to having it, you know, because they're really essential to what they need. So just trying to really be thoughtful as we look at some of those recurring expenditures.
Just being careful of those expenses you take off the budget, you know, cop machines are gonna have to be sooner or later, really soon. So you, you'll have to go save, they're like one-time, short-time savings, and I put a band-aid for next year and the year after. And I just really want, and I'd like to ask that question, Director Rindall, be very thoughtful. Remember, this is still cropping up next year's budget with three point five million dollars of one-time funding. You got one more year of that, and then that is gone. And so that's another one, you got, that's looming out with that S R funding. This, we need to be very thoughtful about how we kind of right-size our budget as we know that funding is not renewable and we know that funding has to be stepped.
At the two point four, how much of that is ongoing for the nurses when they want to fix next year?
Basically, you did the sixty-two to sixty-five. That's, that's still, most of that is already coming from the I P D or the C P I increase to M S O Cs, which is good, the making supplies. And what you're seeing there is that's an added enhancement of social emotional learning for the state. We have a few rollbacks we're hoping, so that's gonna come up there. But the bulk of that is the five point five percent staff allocation for our prototypical staff that are built in there. So next year, we anticipate two point three to two point four I P D, isn't that about, right Nancy?
For the I P D, so that's where we're seeing some of those continued enhancements and some of, I can say, C T E, you know, special, so we'll see some of those enhancements there.
That jump shouldn't be that big the following year though.
No.
Because we're like twenty-five, twenty-five point five.
But I think in the second year, two, not the coming year, the year after that, they will continue to increase the counselor, I think, the counselor allocation, which again, is not significant because we already have those people. It's just a matter of, you know, we're gonna get, you know, that little percentage more to help apply towards our nurses, our counselors, and S R.
They're happening.
So do you want to call it, is that reflecting this year's budget?
That will be this year.
Yeah, okay. Does that, does that change anything about what we presented earlier about?
No, unless kind of baked into the ultimate end-of-year projections.
Is there anything?
Unless superintendents continue to spend money. That surprises me with that. No, there is, I mean, we, everyone pretty good, which was in our budget.
That five point five that they added this year increase, is there anything in the biennium, like a two-year, a year, that they budgeted yet?
Well, I think they've, they've got it built in there.
They've got assumptions built in, it's five point five, two point one, one point nine. They've got it built in based on projections, but they think the I P D is gonna be two years down.
Yeah, but remember what they thought this year was going to be, also two point two, two point two.
Yeah, no, it's five point five, but, so again, this five point nine, and I want you to make sure that Director Tom asked a very intuitive question. You can see our basic ed, sixty-two point nine is what we think we're gonna take in this year, right? Next year, sixty-five point three, and that's based off a smaller enrollment number, right? So you think why is it, why are the numbers going down? Less enrollment, but they also baked in a five point five percent increase, and there's some added S R, there were enhancements in there. So when you roll, if you were to do this for projected twenty-three, twenty-four, there's only a two point one percent I P D. That's not gonna be near as big a jump that you have stuck S R header as well. The challenge will be, I don't think that's gonna be three and a half million dollars to cover the three and a half million of S R, so we're getting yourself lots of. And of course, that also reflects, you know, staff the second year, of course, it'll be a half million dollars in staff. That reflects a zero percent C P I increase to staff, I doubt that's gonna be the case. So again, we have to, we're gonna have those ongoing roll-up costs and not see the revenue match that and not have any income balance to spend out to meet that. And that's where it's gonna be part of that delta typing, unless numbers rebound, unless kindergarten or straight numbers rebound. Remember, we're holding strong second through twelfth grade. It's our K-one numbers, like a lot of state are down, and we're not seeing them come back as quick. And I had a great chance to talk to many superintendents these last couple of days. They're starting to see some rebound, I'm talking to, you know, the Arlene superintendent, and she's seen her numbers rebound a lot of that, for the most part. And we're not seeing that rebound back, I really believe we just don't have the numbers there. The younger families with kids coming to school, we saw the hurricane around them. Yeah, another twenty kids, when we worked pre-shandown, so we tested that number, another three hundred fifty kids, three hundred fifty kids that are in class now, four to four hundred and twenty-five, and sure, it's all four hundred and fifty.
And also the long-term impact for what the impact is gonna be on our LEA and levy as well.
Yeah, so two, and two more questions that I'm not asking for any of you to answer. But I think, one is, I think it's hard to do this on a one-year, because we have the twenty-four, twenty-five, and we know we're baking in, we're assuming these days, then we're just gonna ease in the smaller. So I think it's, it's hard to say this is right without kind of having that vision of what it was.
And we do, sorry, Erica, we do have to have that for your plan.
Yeah.
So we will.
As much as that form.
Right, because that's changing.
But, I mean, the realistic test would be, would be, I think, extremely helpful because I think we, we need to have a plan for our school of twenty-four, twenty-five, while we don't have this.
And potentially, you know, you have next one, the four percent staff mix is higher, which is another four percent reduction, that's the number.
We're gonna record on that one.
We're gonna record on that one, yes.
So that was the first one that I picked.
Yeah, the three-year without a projection.
That'd be good. And then I would be curious if we were to cut another million dollars or expenses, what that would be next year?
For next year?
Yes.
You're talking about other staffs?
I, I am, I am worried about the divergence of these two lines.
Gotcha, okay. So just so you know, Cindy has, of course, indicated to make sure we push our next three macros.
I'm repaying the race.
We are on.
Oh, it's more for you, yes.
So what does that do to our program if we double that?
I, I'm, I'm kind of afraid compared to what I do with the staff here, what, where would we, I'll get back to what that was like. I'd like, yeah, long-term to do, because I just don't. Yes, we're worried about this. Okay. All right, okay, I will be brief, I can answer any questions you may have. I, I know I shared with the board prior that there is a national vaping lawsuit. We have the opportunity to participate in, I would say the vast majority, if not every district that I've talked to, is joining this nationwide litigation against dual labs. I've got, Dan, you want to talk about vaping with our students and the impact? But long story short, this study, required by our board to actually pass the resolution to join this lawsuit. It's a no risk or cost to us, but the opportunity, should this national lawsuit be successful, like the Washington State lawsuit recently was successful, this potentially and likely bring opportunities and resources directed to all law schools for anti-vaping, vape detectors, anti-smoking cessation supports, that I know that maybe even many of our community partners would love to help support us in helping to help some of these anti, again, students, their students to know vaping continues to get issued. And I just would encourage the board to have this resolution, and so I could go ahead and notify them. I do have, I only have the April thirtieth to notify them if they want to sign up and be a part of this class action lawsuit. Any questions about that? Blue Zones, you had a great presentation by Megan DeBolt and her counterparts. I've helped them draft this resolution and basically states that we are working partnership with them in support of the Blue Zones program, and that we see great benefit in this partnership. It's already been a great benefit, we continue to see great work out of this, and this just kind of qualifies them and it helps them also meet some of their community criteria by having resolutions and relationships with many entities. Obviously, Paul's way school's already passed this resolution, we've been asked, and other communities' schools have been asked as well. So I just encourage us to consider this resolution later this evening. Is there any questions about this resolution?
All right.
Good time here. Catch up quickly. Okay.
Number ten, right?
We're at number ten, our policy, yes.
Follow that. So second meeting falls to fourteen hundred.
As, as I mentioned in, in the board package, you've included the revisions and recommendations Director Rindall had at the last meeting. Those have been included in here, and the board, I think, through consensus agreed to those. The one area, note to page two, it says page two of the five on the board policy fourteen. the board, trying to read the two conversations mentioned, and some conversation with Director Labruth and Director Sarley, developing the board packet today, or last week, was the possibility should the board want, wish to record these live sessions using Zoom? We did some work with our attorney, who provided us some guidance on what that looks like, retention records, there are some complexities, translation capabilities, you know, expectations through the ABA requirements. One of the benefits, if the board were to say, yes, we would feel comfortable in recording this Zoom and having it in perpetuity on our website for review, is if Zoom has a automatic transcription function, it would help alleviate any sort of burden to the staff have to transcribe every order being that had been recorded. There's still some question on retention schedules, this is where the OPMA has not caught up with the real world today. And so I anticipate, and Director Sarley as well, in, 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 in legislative affairs, that there's going to be some refinement in the next legislative session, under representative room, it's also trying to advance legislation on this matter. We're kind of, we're kind of getting the cart at the head of the horse, but I think it's an opportunity should the board wish to have that to, to save the roll, roll out this, using some sort of Zoom feature, having Zoom be that conduit by which we can record and rebroadcast, we're already utilizing Zoom for live video viewing, we just be archiving that Zoom recording, having that transcription available, archiving that on our website, and having it archived locally to make sure we are compliant with the Pelican meetings act, and then looking at a retention schedule that may get refined over the coming year or so, legislative affairs. So it's an opportunity, should the board wish to, not just live broadcast, but record and they could available for future viewing. So, questions, Director Rindal?
Do we have a calculation of what the size of each meeting recording is?
I wouldn't know, but I know we've recorded a lot of the Zoom meetings, I don't think they're too substantial, I really think it's pretty small. You can keep it on the Zoom cloud, but I, I think, yes, even if we have to put it on a grid here. I, I wouldn't, I would not be worried about that, size capacity wise, if we're just recording one meeting or so a month for a couple hours.
You mentioned perpetuity and retention, but did the results from the lawyer said probably one year, but six-year?
Six-year interpretation, I, this is where we need clarity from the legislature, this is where I think every public agency right now, this recording and our, and this stuff is kind of, we're kind of out there ahead of the rules, because their rule is based on paper and pencil, where does it go in the bio profile case, we've got a long ways to catch up, and I'm hopeful we'll get some of their guidance on that, because the official minutes and records will still make up a deficiency down there. These are kind of ancillary in addition to, and that's what we need that guidance, because this isn't the official record, then you're trying to parse what's a what record this is all under, so it's.
So your questions about that?
We, I really did have a good conversation with the video surveillance or evidence credit, I think that was pretty from last meeting, so.
Did you, did you look at what, any increased costs would be?
That's what I think is being pretty minimal, getting a clarification, we can use the Zoom feature to, that would be close enough to meet the ABA expectation to do our best effort to prevent someone be, you know, I guess, audio impaired and needing to get in some sort of transcription on that.
I think that will also be mostly-
Yes, I mean, it's both, yeah, it's a translation, yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? The next policy, 2413, was there any?
The, the, the last two policies that we received, I didn't see the comments, I believe it's almost pretty uniform for last meeting, so I think they probably stand as a need.
Okay, so, it looks like we're prepared to move into the action items. Action item number one, looking for a-
I move adoption of resolution 01-2022, participation in the meeting.
Second, you have a pair of seconds, pick your pick. Any discussion? Voting in favor would be aye.
Aye.
Voting unanimous on that, resolution, action item number two.
I move board approval of resolution 03-2022, support group on project 12.
I'll say the same. Okay, no, no second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, go proceed, vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We have another unanimous. We have policy second readings, we'll take them individually.
I'm going to go on off the-
The ripple of the three policies presented before.
I second.
How about some discussion?
Yeah, thank you for your work on this policy committee, and also your, Director Rindal.
No discussion. Voting in favor would be an aye.
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 Opposed? We have all in favor, what is that unanimous, that's the word. And action item number four is issuance of contract that's to allow-
And I have to recuse myself for this particular issue, so.
Yeah, so we are looking for a motion. A second, a proposal in second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And recused? No recuse. Okay, at this point in time, we're only five minutes beyond our-
John, mention up.
We have a good board. We will recuse.